Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting of January 10th, 2018. As always, I'd like to remind you this meeting is being broadcast live and it also is being recorded for use at a later date, so please keep that in mind. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Also, please join me in this pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mara, if you practice up one of these school committee nights, we'll have you sing on the Snosmango banners. Are you alright with that? Okay. An entertaining motion will approve the minutes of December 13, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. An entertaining motion will approve the minutes of December 19, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Mara Burt, how are you this evening?
I'm okay.
Can you give us your student advisory report? Thank you. Nice and loud. Thank you.
So to start off, December 12th will be the winter concert here at the high school. Also, Junior Ethan Phelps has been named MIAA's Student Athlete of the Month. This is a very prestigious honor when you consider that there are more than 300 schools in the state. Since several parents have shown continued interest in purchasing a student recognition ad for the yearbook, the deadline has been extended to February 9th. Ads can be ordered online 24/7. February 1st at 7:00 PM here in the pack will be the all-band night concert. Additionally, Hanson PTO is holding an adult-only bowling night, January 20th, to fundraise for our schools at the Hanson AA bowling room, being $10 a person. Cost covers both lane and shoot rentals. Preschool Information Night will be held here at the Whitman Hanson School Library on February 27th at 6:00 PM. Kindergarten Information Night will be held Thursday, February 15th here in the high school pack from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Kindergarten registration online and by appointment will begin Tuesday, February 20th. A deposit of $250 for full-day kindergarten will be due to register our Lori Wright by Thursday, March 15th by 5:00 PM. Kindergarten lottery, if needed, will be held Thursday, March 22nd at 4:00 PM here in the library. And finally, Hanson PTO will be hosting Dining With a Cause. This will be held January 16th from 5:00 to 10:00 PM at the Waymouth 99 Restaurant on Main Street. Fifty percent of the guest check will be donated to the Hanson PTO.
Does anyone have any questions for Mara? Mara, thank you. Brush up on your singing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna jump around just a little bit for sake of saving some people's time. Our auditing team is here, and Dan Sullivan is here to give us a report on the audit for 2016-2017. Thank you, dear. Thank you for coming this evening.
My pleasure to be here. I'm Dan Sullivan with Clifton, Lawson, Allen. We're the auditors for the financial statements for the Whitman Hanson Regional School District. And I just wanna be as brief as possible, but kinda go through the different aspects of the audit, give an engagement summary, go over a few things related to the financial statements, some of the key components of the footnotes and the financials, talk about the GAO and the OMB reports, which are the reports related to your federal financial assistance that you received, and just talk a little bit about the governance letter that we also provide to you. In the engagement summary, our preliminary audit procedures begin in June, which is pretty typical. We do a lot of things in the spring before the year-end, do some testing of controls, and get ready for the year-end piece of the audit. The primary field work, consistent with prior years, done in the fall. We started that in November. Management staff, consistent with prior years, was responsive to all our questions and inquiries, and we had no disagreements with management throughout the audit process. And the end result was a smooth audit. And as you can, will see in the results of both the opinion that's on your financial statements, which is unmodified, is consistent with prior years, and it's the best opinion that you can receive. Related to the financial statements, there's two major components. There's the government-wide financial statements, which looks at your entity in a whole and also on the full accrual basis of accounting. So it takes into account all your fixed assets, all your liabilities, some of your major liabilities being your unfunded pension, your OPEB liabilities, your other post-employment benefits liabilities, your debt, et cetera. So it's all on a full accrual basis, and it's really all in one column. So it takes into account not only your general fund, but all your other funds looking at it in total. And it's on the economic resource basis and full accrual. When you're looking at, if you have your financials there on page nine, the statement of net position, that's really where the status is of Whitman Hanson as of June 30th, 2017. You have a net investment in capital assets of about $57.4 million, which that's a decrease from the year before of $2.6 million, made up of mostly the depreciation of $2.9, and you picked up about $340,000 of new assets, which was mostly related to building improvements. We have a restricted net position, which is about $1.8 million, and that's pretty much all the monies that are being used in your special revenue funds, your circuit breaker, your grants, your capital projects, et cetera. Things really mostly outside of your general fund. Then you have an unrestricted deficit, which is $35.6 million. That deficit increased about $4.8 million from the year before, mostly because of your OPEB liability, which was like about $3.8 million, and then there's about another million where we'll talk about it a little bit further on. You planned on using about $1 million of your fund balance in fiscal year 17 to balance your budget, instead of assessing to the towns, so therefore that kinda makes up the difference of that. Your net OPEB obligation is $26.1 million, and your pension is 10, so that's making up really about the $35 million deficit position that you have. Because you're running your operations balanced, and these are just long-term liabilities that causes that net position to be in a negative. The fund-based financial statements, which are on the near cash flow, and it's not full accrual, and doesn't show any debt, doesn't show any of these other liabilities, those are on pages 11 through 14 of your financial statements. And that's where you'll see your major funds, which your general fund is always a major fund, and then you had your circuit breaker, and then we have a technology capital project going on, and then the rest are all non-major funds. General fund being the most important to really look at, and at the end of the year, your total fund balance in your general fund was what, $1.8 million. That's down about $800,000 from the year before, partly because you are using E and D to fund a portion of your budget. And as things are getting tight, and this is one thing, in this year, things are tight, and I'll talk about it on the next piece, is that the amount of turnbacks that you have is not as probably robust as it has been in the past, because you just have, you know, your budgeting is very, very close, and, which can be good, you just, I'm sure it causes a lot of work for both the superintendent and the business manager to make sure that you're staying on target. And successfully, every year that we've been auditing has had turnbacks. It's just becoming tighter and tighter every single year. And it's something that I think you're all aware of, and I know based on my conversations both with the superintendent and the school business manager, that it's discussed, and it's not a surprise. Your unassigned, your assigned fund balances, which is your encumbrances, you've actually reduced those quite a bit. What you're getting, what you're budgeting for is what you're spending. You only had about $79,000 that you carried over to the next year, and that's down from $410,000 the year before. And your unassigned fund balance, which is pretty much the basis of your E and D, is $1,023,000, which represents about 1.9% of your total revenues and other financing sources for the fiscal year 2017. The change in the fund balance, we talked about it, was about $883,000. And your budget to actual, this is where I was talking about, you actually turned back about $397,000 in total. $229 of that was related to revenues coming in more than you had planned, and $168,000 of that is from appropriations that you didn't expend. So that, and that $168,000 is only really .3% of your total budget, so that's pretty tight when I'm referring to that. So it's something just constantly to be watching for, and I know that's what both the superintendent and the school business manager, you know, spend a decent amount of time during the year, making sure that you're staying on target. Your fund balances in your non-major funds, you had about $1.1 million, $1,148,000, and that's all the balances that are in your capital projects, special revenues, I think $600 and something thousand dollars of that is in the circuit breaker. Consistent with prior years, you pretty much, what you received for circuit breaker in 17, you spend in 18, and you've been doing that, carrying that over from one year to another. Going into the footnotes, your, on page 32 is your footnote nine on your long-term debt. You have no authorized and unissued debt, so you don't have anything that's pending out there. And the only major debt that you have going on is related to the building, the original building of the high school, and you have about $6 million left on that, and you're paying that down about $620,000, I think next year's like $615,000, so you're gonna be down to about $5.4 million at the end of 2018. The next major note to talk about is your OPEB. Note 10 on pages 33 to 38. So that's a lot of pages, a lot of information. GASB 45 is still in place for fiscal year 17, beginning next year. GASB 75 kicks in. So right now, your OPEB liability, which I said was like about $26.1 million, that's just the difference between your annual required contribution based on actuary and what you've been paying since about 2008. So that's billed up to about $26 million. What's gonna happen once GASB 75, they're saying, "Yeah, we've been only asking you to show what the difference was for the last, you know, 10 years. We want you to show the whole liability now." And that's probably gonna, you know, just, there's gonna be some things that change, but it's probably gonna be more like a $75 million liability. So you'll see that, that'll be a major change when we talk about this with you next year. Doesn't change anything, this information is already there in the footnotes, it's just gonna be on the face of the financial statements going forward. And then on, I think those are like the major things related to the financial statements. And then I'll just move quickly over to the GAO report and the OMB reports. There's two major reports within that group. There's the report on the internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. And there were no findings. I mean, that means that when you prepared your financial statements, everything was in compliance with all the GASBs and with the, with all the requirements that you need to do for your financial statements. And then the second report is that we have to actually audit like 50% of your major grants and report that if we found any compliance issues related to that, and we have no findings on that either. So very clean report. And you had about $2.2 million of federal financial assistance in fiscal year 17, and the major program that we looked at was your special education cluster, which represented about $1.1 million of that, 2.2. And the last thing that I'd like to just go over is that you'll see in your package is the government's letter. And that, we feel, is a very important communication to all of you, to those in charge of governance, to the school committee. And we go through a whole series of pieces of information. It's about a three-page letter, but we talk about any changes in accounting policies that, and really GASB, there was a GASB 74 that was related to your pensions that we had to disclose, and that's the only major change, but that was just in your footnotes. We have to talk about, you know, just remind you which, you know, about the different accounting estimates that you have to use to prepare your financial statements, and that's the actuarial related to the pensions and the OPEB, and really, you know, just really how you estimate what your depreciation's gonna be. Then we talk about if there's any auditing difficulties, and if there were, we would let you know in this. I would be talking to you about that here, too, but it'll also be in writing to you. So it's something you should always look at every year, because we would let you know. There was no difficulties. Any misstatements in your financial statements that we had to correct or that have stayed in it in the financial statements, we would let you know. There were none. Any disagreements? There were none. And if management had to consult with any outside sources to be able to prepare these, and that did not exist either. But those, we feel, are all important things to make sure, because we work mostly, you know, with the superintendent's office and the school business, but really, we wanna make sure we're reporting anything to you guys, because you're the ones who will hire us and you're the ones who'll make those final decisions. And I think that's it.
Anyone have any questions? Dan, and cutting right to the chase for anybody who might be watching, because all of the figures that you've thrown out, a lot of us understand it, but it might be more difficult for someone who's watching this. You're an outside auditing firm that every year comes and audits us, to make sure that everything comes out clean, and that's what you just said. The audit was clean.
Very clean. I mean, there's no findings on your grants, there's no findings, mistakes within your financial statements when we see the data and the trial balances. So it was an extremely clean audit. We had no issues. The people that we work with have a really great understanding, not only of, you know, what they're doing to run the day-to-day operations, but also in preparing the information for the financial statements, have a really good working knowledge of, you know, the GASBs and what's required and what we need from them. And in fact, pretty much, you know, we show up and everything's there in a big pile for us, or sent to us ahead of time, you know, through emails or through different ways. So we come in and we're able to get through this extremely well.
Thank you. Rob?
Just one quick question. You talked about the E and D, how it's getting tighter and tighter, and we still use money from that for our operating budget. Any recommendation from you as to a percentage that we should have in there every year? Or is there a guideline or anything?
Well, I mean, you had about 3% the year before, and now you're down to less than 2%.
Okay.
You know, it's, there's no guidelines, other than you gotta make sure you're comfortable with what you're gonna be able to ask for from, you know, on your assessments. You know, the state funding is obviously getting tight, too. I think Chapter 70 is not growing like, you know, gangbusters, and so it's just something that you're gonna have to be addressing. Probably more going forward in the 19 budget and the 20 budget than you've had to do in the past.
Okay.
And so if everybody, I think, if anything to get out of these financial statements is that you have, everybody involved, you, the towns and everything, have to be prepared for, you know, the reality of what you might have to ask for, if that makes sense. But there's no set guideline.
Okay.
It's really what the appetite is of people to be able to pay forward. You can try to budget like really heavy, so that you always have turnbacks, but it's, you know, it's always been pretty low anyway, and you can't have too much anyway, because you're, the E and D, you'd have to, if it was too much, you'd have to turn it back if it was more than 5%.
Okay.
So definitely would be less than 5%.
So the allowable E and D, just again for anybody that might be watching, is 5% of the budget?
That's...
And the rest after that, it's a turnback.
You would have to reduce the next year's assessment.
Exactly.
And I don't think you've had, you've been in that position...
We've never been, you know, way back.
Yeah, 2007, 2008.
Okay. So...
Long time ago.
So at 1.9%, you're pretty, looking like you're gonna hit that...
No.
...anytime soon.
Brett?
And from a accounting standpoint, the purpose of the E and D account is a safety net. That's for the unforeseen expenses that could occur.
Yes. It's, well, yeah, it's for, yes, that you wouldn't have readily available revenues to be able to, yes, cover.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Special ed goes through the roof.
Through the roof, yep.
You need to have that safety net in order to pay for that, and hopefully you're reimbursed, but sometimes you're not.
Yeah, and I think you're at a point, you know, and to put like, you know, a little bit of a number, I think, you know, you wouldn't want to go too much lower than where you're at right now. You know, you'd want to make sure that if you don't think you're gonna grow it, you'd be careful using it. And I think that's a fair thing to think about, and probably things that you'll have to think about as you're going through the 19 and 20 budget seasons.
Dan, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I wanna begin this evening with something that's not listed, but it's something that's going on right this very moment. And that is, one of our English language arts teachers here at the high school, Ellen Galambos, is being honored by the VFW as an outstanding teacher. And Ellen was nominated this fall for this award, and they are looking for, they're looking for teachers, this is through the VFW, who really promote community service, good values, civic understanding, and Ellen seemed to be just a wonderful candidate for that. So we submitted a nomination with Ellen's name. We found out right before the holidays that she had won for the local VFW. We then learned that she'd also won for the regional VFW, and yesterday, day before yesterday, I learned that she actually came in second in the state. So that's pretty exciting. So tonight, she's at the Whitman VFW along with the Voice of America Award winners, and they're recognizing her for her dedication to students and to education. So very special happening tonight, and if you know Ellen Galambos, she's been here a number of times. She advises National Honor Society, very involved in service learning. And just today, I received an email from her, because she's proposing that we do a day of service, PK through grade 12, with our students here at Whitman Hanson this spring. Work with our various organizations and community members to have our students work on learning how to give back to their communities. So just wanna commend Ellen for that recognition, and it's nice to see those things happening. And secondly, before I start, I also wanna commend Christine Suko and the business department. It is an amazing feat to have an audit with no findings. This is an operating budget and a grants budget that exceeds $50 million. There are many moving pieces, many things that have to be managed, and this also happened last year. So last year, the audit had no findings, so I know Christine was very nervous as we were waiting for this report to come, because when you've done it perfectly, the only way to go is down or to continue to achieve perfection. So I just wanna commend Christine. I think about when she first came here, this was a major growth experience, and to have this for the past two years, you heard all the things Dan talked about. That stuff she knows. And I think we are in very good hands here at Whitman Hanson, so I wanna give him a round of applause. Now, this is also the night for reports, so you have in front of you the annual report for North River Collaborative. This is for your perusal. As you know, Steve Donovan is the recently appointed executive director. He's in his first year. You have that report to go through. If you do have any questions, I know I can help to answer those, but so can Dr. Donovan, who have those as well. So we wanted to make sure that you have that report. We have not met as a superintendent's board since our last meeting, so there's nothing new to report, but you do have the annual report. The next thing, and you have in your packet, is I did announce my retirement in November, but I never sent you a letter. So now you have an official letter, which sets my retirement date as September 15th. This would provide some transition time with the new person who comes in, and I'd be happy to work with whoever that person is, to ensure that things go the way they're supposed to.
An entertaining motion not to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
I can't vote. Okay.
That's did that to me once.
So the letter is there. I don't know if you have to vote that or what you need to do, but there it is, and I have the date, it's September 15th. That can be tentative if you need me longer. I could do that, so that is there.
As you know, the superintendent has put in many, many years at Whitman Hanson, not just as a superintendent, but as an assistant superintendent in various roles. She's been very, very dedicated. It's going to be tremendously hard to replace her, if we can even replace anybody with the caliber of the person that we have sitting beside me to my left. So I wanna thank her for her services to the district, to the students, to the teachers, to the committees. She's been here to foster things that I've gone through with her through the school district. I've been here for years and seen all of this, so Ruth, thank you.
Wow, thank you. Yeah, I'm very mixed about this, but I also have a feeling that sometimes it's time for new people to do this as well. But clearly, as I wrote at the very end of the letter, once a letter, once a panther, always a panther. So I will always care deeply about Whitman Hanson, and certainly happy to do whatever I can to help move the district forward. These are my mid-year goals update. I will say that this is in the time that I have been superintendent, probably one of the most challenging first semesters I've ever had. I think the surprise resignation of Pat Dillon at the beginning of the school year certainly was challenging. We're also dealing with the regional agreement, which had not been changed since 1992. We are in negotiations, and we're closing a school, among the other things that happen in a school system. So there's been a lot going on. We continue to move forward. It's been a bit of a challenge in central office. We're very happy to have Rosmendorance, but she is with us three days a week, so that's quite different than what we're used to. I have focusing her skills and talents at the elementary level, working with our directors, focusing on elementary curriculum, which is something that really needs a lot of focus, and she's doing a great job with that. So the first goal was really to look at pillar two. And if you recall, the three pillars of our strategic plan, the second one is the cohesive PK to 12 system of teaching and learning in the district. And this is the work that we do with the curriculum directors, building principles, and really working to ensure that our curriculum is aligned with state standards, that we are achieving as we should in MCAS, on PSATs, SATs, AP examinations, but most importantly, to ensure that when students leave here, that they are career and college-ready. So it's so much more than curriculum and assessment, it's really looking at a very student-centered approach. So there are a number of things that have been going on this year, just to give you an update. I work closely with the directors. We worked yesterday on our strategic plan. One of my goals through the strategic plan in the last few years that we've been working on it is to make sure it's a living document. So many strategic plans end up being this thick, sitting on someone's bookcase, and they're not alive. But I would contend that most people in this district can tell you what our three pillars for success are. And clearly, the middle pillar that holds this up is the whole pillar of teaching and learning. So when our goals are set, we are aligning them to student success. So you can see some of the strategies that we're doing, some of the successes that we've had. The directors have reformatted their elementary teacher leader meetings, we have vertical-horizontals meetings, working on Atlas Rubicon. I think this is a long-term project to create an electronic shelf for our curriculum. And one of the things that's there is the OECD assessment. And this is the PISA-like test that our 15-year-olds took last March, and I talked a little bit about that in December. We're gonna give you a full report on how our students did. This is very different than an MCAS, that looks at subject area competency. It looks at climate, it looks how our kids feel about their schools, how they feel about It looks how our kids feel about their schools, how they feel about learning, and we'll be giving you more information on that. We're using that information as well to improve student achievement. So the second, the first goal is a huge one, and it's certainly not one that I can accomplish on my own, and we work together as a team to make sure that that happens. As I said, Rosman Dorance has been critical in her interim role in helping me with that. The next one is base, pillar two, is based on the transition, you're gonna hear more about, of the closing of McQuan School. And this has clearly dominated a lot of what we've done almost every single day since this vote was taken April 12th to determine that we were gonna close McQuan, and then, of course, the Board of Selectmen in Hansen approving that at the end of May. So this has been an ongoing process. We're gonna talk about that later on this evening. There have been transition meetings as recently as last night with the Board of Selectmen. I see Jim Hickey's with us tonight. We appreciate the support of both of our towns in moving forward with this. But this has been ongoing, lots of meetings. At this point in time, I think with the support from both of our towns, we're gonna be able to stick to timelines, and as I said, we'll give you more in-depth on that. We have a very busy committee working on this. Goal number three is one that we talked about in depth yesterday, and I think it's critical as we look to the FY '19 budget, and that is our work in social-emotional learning. We are finding that our students today are coming with many more social-emotional challenges than we have ever seen. We now have a transition room at the high school that's now in its third year of operation for students who have been hospitalized for physical or mental health illnesses, to help them get back into high school, to be successful rather than going from being out right back into the classroom. We are working, I think one of our biggest endeavors this year is the Excel Learning Network. Forty school districts applied to be a part of this. We were one of nine who were selected. We've been to two meetings with them, and this is really looking at trying to get them to the classroom and providing support for our teachers in working with students when they come with social-emotional issues, and also helping our students learn to build self-control, resilience, how they deal with problems, coping mechanisms, coping skills, and looking across the board, district-wide, so that we know that whatever school you're in, whatever level it is, that our staff are there to support our children. And this has been very challenging. And we also spoke to you about working with South Bay, the pilot we've been working on so that resources for parents are more readily available to them. This is not really a district program, but what we're trying to do is cut through some of the red tape that it takes for parents to get the services that their students may need. So those are things we've worked on this year. We hired Denny Howley from North River Collaborative to work with us. Denny's an amazing resource, because even though it sort of says she works one day a week, she thinks about us all the time. And she's working hard to see that our schools, particularly at the elementary level, where they need the support, know how to reach out to community services for families when they need them. How do you help a family apply for Mass Health if they need it? If a family's in crisis, who do they go to? And a lot of times, that's not necessarily a resource that we would have. So we're working with Denny. We have a wellness committee that's primarily there for bullying prevention, but we have expanded that. Bob Rogers, Maureen McKenzie, Kyle Riley are very involved in making sure that that works. Whitman Hansen will, which is really helping with drug abuse and prevention, alcohol and drug abuse, and we've been working on that. We've had a drug dog raid here at the high school and also at the middle schools. No findings. I think the next day, something's found, but okay, the dogs didn't find anything. But we've been working hard on that to make sure that we look at the results of our surveys and take them seriously. So there are a number of things going with that. I think yesterday, our conversation when we were looking at our budget for next year is that to a person, and it didn't matter whether you were the director of technology, elementary principal, I think all of us felt that's a number-one priority, because if our students are not emotionally healthy, everything else we do doesn't really matter. So goal three is one, I think we've made some good progress this year and continue to do so. And then the fourth one is looking at how we develop a financial plan. And that has become, in my mind, probably one of the most difficult things in my superintendency here at Whitman Hansen. I think regional school districts make a tremendous amount of sense. I think they're cost-effective. You have one superintendent, one business office, but I don't believe over time that has been supported as well as I would like to see at the state level. I think through regionalization, this district, these two towns, became too dependent on state aid. And as a result, for the nine years I've been doing this, and I know for John McEwen, from really 2007 on, when Chapter 70 became level-funded for Whitman Hansen, it has been exactly what Dan Sullivan told us, tight and challenging. We have tried to meet with the communities, and I think they've made good faith efforts. We had a meeting in June, we had one in October, but these are primarily residential communities. We do not have Gillette Stadium. We do not have the mall here. We have small businesses, which we are, it's that kind of a community. So when that's what it is, he's right. We've really got to look at local contributions and move forward to get the money and the plans that we need. So that's been very, I think, challenging for us as a school district, and I think for the people who come after me, an ongoing challenge, and the more we can work with the communities, the better. I was hugely encouraged last year by the 8.5% increase in the assessment from the two towns without an override. If somebody had told me that last year at this time that that was gonna happen, I would have found that hard to believe, but it did happen, which tells me that support is there, but we really have to reach out and communicate what the needs are. So that's where we are this year. Number of things we're working on. Chad is gonna give you in a very few minutes our plan with one-to-one devices. We've talked about that before. I think one of the things we've done with safety and security has been very effective. As you know, Pat Dillon had a tremendous background in safety and security, worked on the emergency plan, and one of my goals was to not let that languish, to not let all of that good work be forgotten. So this year, Julie McKillip at the elementary level, George Pharo Middle School, Jeff Simonak at the high school, have taken on the role as point people for safety and security in working with their colleagues to make sure we're moving forward. At the district level, Ernie Sandland, working with Chad, and the rest of the central office team have done a terrific job of pulling that together. We've already had several meetings with our police and fire officials, and I think we're making good progress with that. Continue to work on good communication. We've had a number of drills this fall. They've been successful. One of the things that our principals group are planning for this is a tabletop exercise for administrators. It's gonna take place in February, where they're going to work with us on what would happen if we had to evacuate a school? What would it look like? And then we're going to do maybe some kind of a drill late spring to see what would it look like, and we're not gonna make it too dramatic. We don't want to frighten anybody. But what if we had to call the buses immediately? How quickly do they come? You know, we'll do some things to get a real sense of what response time would look like. But I do see us that, you know, in spite of Pat leaving, the good work that he did, I really think is moving forward, and the model of having the three principals do this has worked amazingly well. So, you know, I think it's really good progress. I think the idea of having Ernie and Chad work together is great, because both of them know these buildings, these systems, and how they work inside and out. So I think we're in really good shape with that and continue to move forward. So that's where we are mid-year. As I said, this has been pretty challenging so far, but we've made it this far. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Anyone? As you can see, the goals are lengthy. She's updated us all the way through here of what's going on. Part of the safety and security, this tabletop that Ruth is talking about, is really a must, even though some parents at times say, "Well, you don't need it." You do need it, because Robbie's shaking his head, he's with the fire department.
He knows.
And he knows these things happen if you're not prepared. It's peddled, and it's not safe and secure, so just looking forward for that preventative measure. I commend you on that.
Very important, and I think one of the other things we're working on that I didn't mention is Rosman Dorance is working with Jeff Simonak on putting together a guide for teachers to have, because we've put together some district books that we put out every year that administrators have, but we really found, and this is something Rosman brought with her from Tewksbury, was the fact that teachers, when something happens, also need to know what's going on. And so the plan is they're putting this together this year to give our teachers, you know, quick reference. Okay, something happens, what do you do? Who do I call? What happens? And their intent is to have that completed by the end of the school year, so that everyone will have that as well. So I think there's a lot, lot going on in that area. And things happen all the time, all the time. I mean, there was a funky smell at Whitman Middle School. Fortunately, it was a battery. Then the ventilation system turned on, so it wasn't sewage, which was the message I got when it all started. And then I'm thinking, here we go with the evacuation plan. And this happens all the time, every day. So the fact you know plans, you know what you're gonna do, it keeps people from overreacting, from making snap decisions, and I think we get through them pretty well, so. And I work hard to keep you all involved, so you know what's going on. I don't want you to have surprises either. So you get these do-not-reply emails, so that when you do get a call, "What's going on?", you at least have a fighting chance of understanding what it is.
Okay. Thank you, Ruth.
You're welcome. So our next is, Chad's gonna report, and you have it as a handout, on one-to-one devices. And as you know, from our presentation, from the directors at the last meeting, and Rosman, they talked a lot about how online testing is definitely coming our way, the importance of the one-to-one units, how we're moving from the computer labs, which were oh-so, you know, 20th century now, to one-to-one devices. There's a, if you get the chance to go over to the Conlee School, as you know, they have multiple basket auctions. Year after year, they raise somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 every single year, and they have taken those funds and used it to take what was a traditional computer lab and have turned it into what I call a collaboration center. It's absolutely fabulous. The furniture is interchangeable. Kids can use the one-to-one units now. You don't have standalones. It's just really what you want education to look like. So I commend Karen Downey for her vision forward, and the Conlee PAC and parents for being able to come up with that kind of funding. Chad and Ernie also put a lot of time and energy into it as well. Chad, your report.
So I was asked to take a look at the one-to-one device initiative, based on some comments from last meeting, and our ongoing initiative that we've been using for the last four years. Currently, we have about 1,500 Chromebooks, and so we looked at what we have now and how do we get a device in every kid's hands. So we had a few considerations we wanted to start with, and we kind of build from the general questions, and each consideration will get us down into a very specific device and specific area we're gonna actually put them. So what we started with was the first question was, do we go with a one-to-one device, district-owned or BYOD, bring your own device? We had a lot of discussions in the leadership meeting and talked about the pros and the cons about having the district buy all the devices or have students bring in the devices. I kind of went through and put a few bullet points for each one. For the one-to-one devices that the district provides, it gives every student the same device, which is a positive. The management and control of each device is vitally important when you have potentially 3,500 devices. You can easily deploy things to them, control them, put the necessary controls on them for safety, security of the students going on the websites, SIPA requirements, things like that. Also, having the same device also allows teachers to develop curriculum based on exactly the same device for every student. So we looked into BYOD, so that would entail inviting students to bring in their device from their house, whatever that device is, and utilize that during the day in the classroom for instruction. A few things we learned from that. One, it will definitely save us a lot of money, because we're not buying all the devices, we're not buying all the devices in order to supply for the students. There are a few caveats, I think, that came with it when we looked further into it, talking to colleagues in other districts that have done this, good and the bad. Some of the things we came up with was, there's gonna be a lot of different devices. Every person at their house might have something completely different. You know, someone might have a tablet without a keyboard, someone might have a Surface or a Mac device. When you bring those types of devices into a classroom, there's a lot of different things you can do with them. One might not have a keyboard. If you're in an English class, it's not gonna really do very well typing on a screen. So there's quite a few different things that kind of come into play when a teacher has multiple different devices. They might be more limited on what they can use in the curriculum for some of that stuff. So some of the other things that, concerns that came up with the BYOD is the different devices, if a student didn't bring it with them for the day, what do you do? We'd have to have supply of devices for someone that forgot it or forgot their cord or something like that, so I think that kind of plays into the mix as well. In addition, have and have-nots, the haves and have-nots, where someone might have this nice, beautiful Mac, MacBook laptop, and someone might just have a Nook, which is, you know, probably one of the cheapest devices you can get out there. So you kind of have those types of scenarios with the students in the classrooms as well. Based on some of those scenarios, we, one of the other positives of having a BYOD is that the student would have the same device if they're at their house and they use it inside the classroom, so they have the familiarity with it. So that's a positive of that. But based on everything we kind of discussed, the initiative that we wanted to continue with and move forward with is the one-to-one district-owned device. It makes the most sense for the district to provide the one specific device that works well for the teachers and the instruction as well as testing. When you're doing the MCAS testing, we have to put an application on a computer. If it's not ours, it's a little more difficult for us to get onto someone else's computer, or it's not ours, it's not our property, and things like that. So we decided going forward with the Chromebook initiative, the district purchasing would be the best interest of the district. So we went down further. Consideration number two, who's gonna get a device? In talking with the principals and what they're using now, the students, we have lots of different devices that the students use in all the buildings, anywhere from iPads to Chromebooks to tablets, laptops, things like that. And the Chromebook initiative would be used for anyone in grade two to grade 12. The lower levels, the grade K and grade 1, they've mostly taken on with the tablet devices. The iPads specifically, we have the kindergartens use the most, because it's app-based, there's a lot of things that are on it that are, instead of with the keyboards and things like that. So that works well for the K to 1. So we're gonna look at getting devices for anyone from grade 2 to grade 12, and that would include about 3,200 students. So currently, we have 1,500. We're looking at getting all 3,200 students some Chromebook device. So the next consideration that we have is, do we give every student a device that's specifically to them, or do we go with the classroom sets? Currently, what we have now is we've been buying them piecemeal in small quantities, and we get a cart, which is a charging cart that holds 25 devices, and they use that per classroom. So what they do is they use that and they kind of share it between the classrooms. That's, that model has worked very well for them, where the devices stay in the classroom, the kids go in, take the device out, use it, it's fully charged. When they're done the class, if they're like in the middle school and high school where they're changing classes, they would put it back in, and the teacher knows that they have all the things in there, and then they're all ready to go for the next class. So the other scenario would be one-to-one with the students. So one student would have the device, and they would bring it with them no matter where they go. So if they change classes, they would keep it with them within the school, not necessarily take it home, but they would do that in between classes, and maybe if the student, even in the elementary, you know, they go from, they go into art class and wellness, so they would potentially have that same device, and they have to bring it back and forth with them if they used it in each of the classes. In talking with the leadership and the principals, they really like the classroom sets. It works well for the teachers, they know they have something, it's all set, ready for them to go. The kids know to take them out, they put them back as soon as they're done. You don't have the issues of lost, broken, when you're carrying them around, you drop them potentially, so you have some damage. So they like that scenario. So what that brings forward now is, when we have classroom sets as opposed to one-to-one, now we're getting sets of, say, 25 is a typical set that we get, and then now we're gonna multiply that times every classroom. Once we multiply those numbers out, you actually get more devices than if you were gonna actually buy one for every student, and I kind of highlighted some of that in here. The classroom sets would need about 3,500 Chromebooks, as opposed to if every student got one, we'd need about 3,200. So what that scenario means is that it's, we have a few sets of carts that may be going out like a library or a non-classroom area that allows for instruction when they're not, when they're in those types of areas. So the numbers would be a little higher in the classroom sets as opposed to if we got one for every student. In the classroom sets, we also have a few additional devices. In the classroom sets, we also have a few additional devices, one for the teacher and one for a couple, maybe like one or two spares for if the kids, if there's an extra, if we have a problem with one of the devices or whatever. So. And the classroom sizes, you know, fluctuate anywhere between, you know, 20 and 28, 30 in the high school, some of the classes. So we would also account for those numbers as well. So what we came up with was the classroom sets. So for that consideration number three, the classroom sets would be the best fit for the classroom instruction in utilizing them in the district. So based on those numbers, we'd be looking, we'd need a total of 3,500. We currently have 15, so we'd need an additional 2,000. So what our proposal that we looked at was for classroom-based Chromebook sets for grades two to 12, 2,000 Chromebooks, licenses, and carts to go along with them. The licenses we talked about last time was, it's a management license that goes on each device you pay for once, that allows for the management of the device, so we can apply policies and things to limit websites and things that they do on them for SIP requirements and security purposes, in addition to put apps on there for them. If they're doing something in the class and need an app, we can easily push to it. That's, we use the push to the app for all the MCAS testing, the WEDA testing for a lot of ELL students when they do that. It takes, like, it's literally a two-minute push, and it appears on the device. So with that license, that's what that allows us to do. It's a one-time purchase, so once we have it, if we refresh the devices, we wouldn't have to purchase that again. So, so what we'd be looking at is the 2,000-plus licenses and the carts. And our estimate that we got is $475,000. From there, we kinda took a few options and looked at, instead of just paying for it all at once, all upfront, how can we break it down? We looked at a few three-year lease and four-year lease. The three-year fair market value lease would be roughly $160,000 per year. The fair market value lease is similar to leasing a car, where you, at the end of the term, there's a fair market value of the device. You either pay for that or you send it back. Our goal would be to turn back the device, because after four years, it's ready to get refreshed. So this would be more like a utility cost for us. So we pay, we set up the lease, and then we'll just flip it over for another four-year term. So that would be my recommendation, I guess, four years, 'cause three years is, you could probably get a little more out of it. You can probably squeeze four to five, but four is a good year for it. So those are the options that we came up with initially, after having some conversations, talking with one of our vendors to get some pricing. This, there's still a lot of options in addition to this, because how it fits into our budget, with the financial aspects. We could do this a lot of different ways, depending on what monies we have available. Do the outright purchase. You can do the leases. You can break it up into, stage it over multiple years with the 2,000 devices. In addition, after we do these, we'd have to have a consideration for the 1,500 we bought over the last four years and kind of do those. So we're looking, we'd look to kinda come up with, the first set is figuring out what we're gonna do with these first 2,000, and then we'd come up with something for year to year to do a refresh of the devices. In addition to some of the, these considerations I didn't add on here was, the way we've been doing it over the years is small piecemeal. And on the backside of this, we've also been working on our infrastructure, the wireless and the networking, to support all of these devices. And because we've done it, small quantities of devices, we've been able to keep up with updating, you know, a lot of our wireless in the buildings and a lot of our networking, taking advantage of E-rate funding and things like that. Jumping in with all additional 2,000 devices, we'd have to put a little more consideration into looking at additional infrastructure needs that maybe we need to look at to maybe update a few things, so that when these get in there, they'll be at optimal use, you know, for full throughput of devices, 30 of them in a classroom, and things like that. So we're looking to do a wireless study on what we have now, working with one of our vendors to kinda get us an assessment on that. We'll be doing it probably within the next month or so, to give us an idea of where we stand and what would need to be done if we kinda throw ourselves in with 2,000 extra devices going forward. This is our finding so far. I think we have some good numbers, and, you know, the next step, I think, would be working with the budget and figuring out where this stands and whatever the pleasures of the school can aid to, you know, move this forward.
Chad, do you have any idea, just a rough figure of what you think the outfit cost would be to accept the new devices? Because obviously, this is gonna come into the full picture of whether you go three years, four years, you know, we need, we need a total kinda figure. Are you saying we're gonna be a couple months down the road before we get any further? This is informational only?
For the devices themselves, I mean, I think we're in a pretty good, we're in pretty good shape with the actual Chromebooks. You know, the only piece that I think I need to look a little further, deeper into is some of the infrastructure that we have, the wireless and the networking stuff. And I think, within a few weeks' time, I think I can put together something, potentially for the next meeting, and have something ready with some good ideas of what, if we went full in with these 2,000 devices, what would we need in order to make sure that we can accept them all without any issues?
And I think if I could jump in, our next meeting will be the budget presentation. And that's why Chad and I thought it was a good idea for him to talk to you about this this evening, because we have a good sense of what a level service budget would look like. Christine's working on seeing what revenue would look like. And then I think that the next challenge is figuring out, okay, we've got the plan. How do we implement it? And clearly, if you're moving beyond a level service budget in doing this, how much can we actually do? So I appreciate the work that Chad's done on that. When we do expand the wireless capacity, we are able to use some of the E-rate funding from the federal government. So that certainly helps. The E-rate money has declined dramatically over the years when we could use it for a variety of systems. But now it can be used to improve wireless access. So that's money that we would not have to necessarily use from the operating budget, but it's really, as Chad said, getting an assessment of what's going on. Yesterday, we had our strategic planning meeting, and this was a huge topic of discussion. First being, as I mentioned earlier, social emotional learning. And the idea is if our kids aren't healthy, doesn't matter what kind of devices you have. But provide, but understanding you can't do one initiative at the expense of another, looking at what are ways that we might be able to look at this and make it work. And the principals were very helpful, the directors as well, is saying, well, getting one device for every student right now would be great. The idea of classroom sets in high priority areas is what they really need. And I know from building projects, Hingham Middle School had a building project. I just did Danvers High School, Niask. They, West Springfield was another. When they have a building project, the kids all get one-to-one devices. That's what happens when you have a building project. And in many ways, many times, it's not used that well. So when it's a one-to-one and it's just sort of there, you end up playing games on it. And you might not be really using it to improve teaching and learning. But if you have it as a classroom set, it's an inherent part of your curriculum. The reason we did classroom sets this year were because of the new curriculum in math and science at the middle school, and that's why they need more there, for sure. So that would be a high priority to ensure that the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math and science curriculum can move forward. It might not be as big of a deal to do it 100% across the board. So that was when they talked about it. They said, doing, doing this over time is a have-to. Our kids today have to learn how to read online, how to communicate online, how to be assessed online. We know that. But there are certain high priority areas where this is a big part of instruction. So I think people take this very seriously. They understand, we don't just have half a million dollars hanging on a tree to do things like this, but that it's something we need to do. So we need to be thoughtful in the approach. When we come forth with the budget presentation, we will have that as part of it. But that's why we wanted to bring it to you tonight, so we get some direction in terms of what your thinking is as well.
Questions, anyone? Fred?
Yeah, sorry.
The dollars that you've outlined for 2,000, that's for 2,000 units.
Correct.
Yep.
But we're going to need more of a total of closer to 4,000. So we'd have to implement something as what we have. And so, do we know what the lifespan is on our current inventory? And when things are gonna start to need to be replaced out?
The oldest ones we have were about four years old. So those are kind of getting towards the end of the life. Lifespan of them are typically about four to five years. That's kind of what, what's out there in the industry. So we're kinda coming to the end on some of them. At the beginning, we didn't, we didn't get that many. So that's a small number. Maybe, we're talking maybe 60 total that we bought initially, that we kinda spread around and used as kinda testing. We used them for Park originally. So, so those are kind of in the initial stages. But going forward, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to definitely make considerations for, after we get the full 2,000, how do we get the 1,500 refreshed as well? The nice thing is, is that the refresh is going to just be the device itself. We don't have to refresh the license, that's already done. The carts are, will already be there. So we fully, so the cost will be a little cheaper just for the device themselves.
What's a device run roughly?
So the device itself, right now, is probably like $180, $185 apiece. When you buy them in the big quantities, hopefully, we're gonna get a better deal. So that would be what would start refreshing going forward after we get it.
Yeah, this averages $237.50.
Which one's per license?
Yeah, about $25, yeah.
So you're talking $100, $225 a device?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, about $220, it's been about $225, somewhere in there.
But the licenses we currently have on the older units, we can transfer that license over to a new.
Lifetime license, yeah, correct.
To a new unit.
And then the carts that we have and the carts we buy, that we won't have to do anything with those. So the refresh will just be the device.
Do we have a, an idea or an insurance quote should students want, have the ability to take them home? What that insurance would cost?
We haven't, have not looked at that. I looked at a break-fix cost, which is almost an insurance for that. It's, I think it was about $40 per device.
Is that high?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was, it's, it was kinda, I mean, I talked to one company and just to kinda put some numbers together. So it was kinda high, not really worthwhile for a device that's $185. So, but taking it home is another issue that, another thing we briefly talked about at our leadership meeting, and it wasn't something that the principals. I think it would only really be for high school students, if, if anything. That would be the students that would take it home. No one's really, from the middle school and elementary, have said that that's something that they want.
If we ever got to a point, as we were discussing in the past, of being able to have our textbooks, you know, via online.
Well, some of them are. That's, that's the reason for this at the middle school level right now. It's, do you buy a textbook or do you buy the Chromebook? And the idea is with the Chromebook, is things get updated in the textbook, it's pretty, you don't have to buy another textbook.
But the student, if he, he or she has a homework assignment, would need to have their textbook available perhaps at home. They'd need to be able to take the Chromebook home.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the stuff, like we was mentioning, like the science and math curriculum that they got is all online.
It's online. It's on, in the cloud. So it's not that you need the device. You need to access to the internet.
As long as there was access.
Right. And I think there are a lot of options here. I mean, many of our students do have access to internet, but clearly, things could be checked out from the library. You could check out a Chromebook and take it home. I mean, I think there are a lot of options of something like that.
Kevin?
So when you considered bring your own device, did you consider specifying that it has to be a functional, you know, like a Chromebook or something? I mean, it doesn't. I don't see how the choice has to be, either everybody gets the Chromebook or bring whatever you feel like bringing. I mean, you need to be able to get onto websites. You need to be able to type. So you, I mean, I think, I think it can be a little less dramatic than just, you know, bring anything. Like, you know, if you say, if you have a Chromebook, specifically a Chromebook, you know, and a lot of them do, and they're much cheaper to buy than a lot of the other things. So is that a consideration then? For instance, I'll get a, a letter from, from like the elementary school that'll say, you know, bring headphones. Okay, so send the kid to school with headphones. Obviously, not everybody does that, but it's something that I think a lot of parents are willing to do. Couldn't you do something similar with the Chromebooks?
Yeah, we've, we definitely considered that, and also talked with districts that do BYOD, bring your own device. I think you come into a difficulty with, you're bringing your own device, the one you have at your house. We can certainly specify X, Y, and Z qualify as something that we would like you to bring in. Anything else, please don't bring in. The problem is, is that people have all, like I mentioned before, people have all sorts of different devices, and if they all don't have specifically what we use, then that, that's when you're gonna have more of the haves and have-nots, where we're gonna have to supply a heck of a lot more, so that everyone's using the same type of functionality and device. The other thing that comes into play is, we specifically, when we selected these devices, way back when we started with Park, we went with the larger screen. A lot of Chromebooks come with like 11-inch screens or smaller. And we specifically went with the 13.3 screen, so it's a, it gives them as big a size as possible with the cheapest device. So then that's, so when you get into testing, that's the specific area you don't wanna get into. Oh, I have this tiny screen, and Christine has this larger screen, which might help her do better on the test. You know, so that's, so we standardize it for a lot of that stuff as well. So I, I completely understand what you're saying. We, you can definitely do that. And some districts have said that we would like everyone to bring in Chromebooks or laptops with this specific specifications, but depending on the demographics, who has what and what can they afford to do. You can also do something going further by saying, we would like this specific. If you don't have it, we can help you purchase it or whatever. But that's when you get into a lot of management and a lot of assistance in buying it, and some people can't, and some people can. So it's a little more difficult getting into that as well.
And our most recent free and reduced lunch numbers are over 30%. So that means, you know, three in 10 kids are living in homes where they need at least supplemental lunch, free or reduced. That's a lot to say, expecting you to spend $200.
The big thing with the big BYOD as well, that I've talked to some of my colleagues, is that the downside of it is the ones that don't remember to bring it in. And the stack of supplying extra devices you have to have seems to keep growing and growing, because someone didn't bring it in, oh, they brought it in, but their cord, they didn't bring their cord in, and they have a Samsung laptop that no one has that cord for, and the thing dies in the middle of the class. So that's the frustration level. There's some of the things you don't necessarily think of off the top of your head that people have went through and were like, that was, you know, a tough thing for us to do, where we just had a supply of them, and then now we almost have a supply for every kid. So then it was, so there's a lot of things that go in, and I think.
Thought a lot about it.
It's a tough stuff.
Another thing, I just, I think it might be kinda crazy to roll this stuff out in the elementary level without a teacher for technology at the elementary level.
Well, I think you definitely have to have professional development. We do have a relationship with North River Collaborative, you know, so there is an opportunity for training. But that's one of the most important things with rolling something out. I mean, we, we are using them a lot at the middle school for the new math and science curriculum, but there's training. There are people working on it. They know how to use it. To give it to people without training is not a great idea. But I think the reality of it is that it's, it's the way it's going, so we have to have a plan.
Yeah. And the, and the way that we've deployed it out in the past four years, has it been in small batches with, you know, being purchased from like the packs and things like that? And then we've purchased some.
And almost all fundraisers.
And so people have been sharing the devices, and so they've been using them, getting used to it. And then the next teacher says, oh, I wanna play around with it. And they get them, and they like them, and they use them. So they kind of, and we've been throwing a lot of PD with any efforts that we have and resources. And people have been immersed in a lot of the stuff. So now it's, I think it's a matter of, you know, you're gonna get some people that just don't want to have anything to do with it anyways. But most of them, I think, are getting immersed enough to say, yeah, it puts them in front of me. I like to play around with them and use them and get them involved with the kids.
Thanks.
Robbie? I was just gonna throw it, and I think Chad's being modest, and tell me if I'm wrong. It'd be easier for his department, having it so that it's set up that it's classroom-based versus bringing your own device. Because I've been in his department multiple times, and the log of calls coming in from teachers, exactly, it's huge, all kinds of things going wrong. And by a student bringing in their own device, and now it doesn't work. Well, why does it work? Well, it's running, and I'm wrong with this, but wrong operating system, wrong whatever. Teachers are trying to make phone calls to try to get it fixed right away, and you've only got, how many people working in there typically on a day?
Uh, four.
Four?
Yeah.
If somebody's not out having to go work at a school for something else. So I just, and that's something that he, honestly, he doesn't push a lot for staffing and things like that. But that's, that would be a consideration where I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, it'd be easier for your department if it's classroom-based. and correct me if I'm wrong, it'd be easier for your department if it's classroom-based units versus.
Yeah, yeah.
Versus, you know, people bringing in their own.
Oh, without a doubt. The management, the man, everything you read online, just for BYOD in schools, you'll see that the first thing is, is management of them is a nightmare because of everything you just said, that it's just, it's just much more time-intensive to onboard someone that comes in, and how do you fix a device that's not yours? You can't really fix it, how much can you help them with it? So, there's a lot of those backend stuff that.
And I think for the teachers, it'd be easier too if it's one device, yes, versus.
I was just gonna say, we have high-time family children doing homework. As a teacher in the classroom, and having to bring their own devices, I mean, they remember their phones.
Yes, yes.
Bringing their own devices to classrooms, that's, I just, you know, and I know we talked about the math and science. Being at the middle school, the ELA teachers who are already, I might have to say, because, you know, that's your, you know, your own task.
Your essays.
And they're doing work on it right now, and they're borrowing it from the math and science rooms, you know, to be able to use them in their rooms, that's what I'm seeing right now, you know, so, you know, really important, but the classroom sets, definitely.
Good.
Fred?
Have we, have we given thought to maybe stair stepping? In other words, high school.
Yes, we have.
Eleven, you know, tenth through twelfth, bring your own device. Everyone else, the Chromebooks saves on, you know, some resources, et cetera.
Yeah, this, this report was just to show kind of where we're at, some of the, some of the steps we went through and what we need to get to the end. This would be it, if we can do it all at once, great, you know, but the real scenario and the reality is the stair, the steps of starting with the higher levels potentially, and getting into their hands and then working down to the elementary as well. Yeah, we've looked at a few different scenarios that maybe we can do it piecemeal, starting in smaller bunches, starting with the higher levels, there's a few different scenarios that we looked at.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a professional, I, I do this for a living, IT, and the BYOD in our company and many other companies, you're told you can have this device, this device, you know, very specific set of rules, and if you don't meet the network security settings, you're not getting in the network, because it's a headache to troubleshoot with fifty thousand devices. Because every operating system, every size, it's all different, like Chad's saying, you know, you go from an eleven-inch screen to a thirteen-inch screen, big difference, and what you can jam on that, and some requirements. I mean, so, rolling in the same type of things in a classroom is much easier for the, I would say, for the district. Might not be easy for the, to bring home type user, because not everybody's gonna want a Chrome. Because like you said, you know, we got thirty percent of people that probably can't afford to have a Chromebook, but then you have other people, you know, I mean iPads, Samsungs, Kindles, MacBooks, tablets in the nooks. I mean, and.
And that's just today, right? Yeah, that's right now.
That's just the name, not the common variation.
That's right.
That's a headache for a department for like Chad to have to, that's why I've always been pushing, if you're gonna go after something, it's Chromebook or an iPad, iPads, you know, you're only gonna get one out of the, one to five, for what you're getting to buy. So, and plus, Google gives away free educational software, stuff like that you can use. Well, you're not gonna see that from Apple.
Probably not.
You know, you'll see a bill, but that's about it. So, that's another thing you would have to look at, I mean, you know, it makes more sense to probably go to a classroom set. Everything's standardized.
Seems to have work going so far.
Take control, which is pushed out there, so if a teacher needs, or like we were talking about, I know, we're just talking about the math. My son had it last year in the middle school, because he had to keep coming over to my laptop to get to it because his didn't support it. So, that's, you know, the thing, if it doesn't support it, you can't get to those tools.
Thank you.
Just a comment, I would like to see it go from the elementary.
One of the considerations was, that was talked about with the top-down was the, elementary have powerful fundraising that they, if you look at the past eight to ten years, they've funded for every Promethean board in every classroom in all the elementary, almost all of the Chromebooks that they have in the elementary schools now, and then a whole slew of other devices and other technology things that they did buy. So, I think that was kind of the thought process, because on the, once you get up in the higher levels, you don't necessarily see that type.
Yeah, that's true, but it seems like it's always, everything seems to go high school down, where maybe it's just stuck elementary up. That, that's just me.
Yeah, I think most importantly, it needs to be done on a prioritized basis. And Beth brought up one that Amy Fleck has talked about tremendously, is that our students have to write their MCAS responses on a device. They have to do that, and, I mean, we all write, you write on paper, you write, and you know it's different. You know, I know my skills in writing today are far different from when I was in school and wrote everything out, or in college, sitting on my bed with this little tiny typewriter. I mean, it's completely different type of writing, and, you know, so I think it's, you know, where you mentioned elementary, I think it's really by priority, and that's what we came up with yesterday in the conversation, that there are high-need areas for these that probably for twenty eighteen, nineteen, if we had to prioritize this, should happen. And then over time, the goal is to populate it entirely, and then we've got to look at where we are with budget and revenue as well.
Fred?
I'd just like to add to the conversation, if we're going to make a commitment to do it, we should just do it a hundred percent. And when I was talking about stair stepping, I was talking more perhaps you allow the higher grades to maybe do a BYOD. You know, you're tenth, eleventh, or twelfth, or something of that nature. Those kids in the school seem to be perhaps a little bit more savvy, per se. As you were saying, you have people in here every day, you know, with the iPads, et cetera, and our prior conversations. So, but if we're going to do this, I'd much rather see us budget for it and do it all at once and get it done.
Well, and, and I think the piece that came up is that if you go through the district, we look like a technology district. But truth be told, most of it's been purchased with fundraisers, that's exactly what Chad said. We've got Promethean boards, we've got all these different things, but, you know, people have eaten a lot of spaghetti, they've bought a lot of baskets, they've done a lot of things, and very little of it has come out of the operating budget. And I think you're probably right, it's time that that happens.
And meat?
People bought a lot of meat.
Meat, meat raffles, right?
Kevin?
Do these depreciate too fast to be capital expenses?
Yes.
Is that the case?
Yes.
In our five years?
Yeah.
Although they're pretty darn hardy, aren't they?
Yeah, they're really consumables.
They are.
Because they're so cheap and.
And changing technology is just, I mean, we didn't even know what a Chromebook was five years ago.
Well, remember the fundraisers with the iPads?
Sure.
Just a couple of years, could have had three Chromebooks for each.
Yeah, I mean, it just changes constantly, that's why we need the flexibility as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, the next one I have is if you recall that there was a request to have some of the turf from the old turf field, so if you go through your packet, you all asked me to contact Andy Watts, because there were concerns about liability. So, work through your packet, and I saw it in here. If you go near the back, how many in one? Five in from the back. What Andy recommended was that he said, you know, probably nothing would happen with this, but he commended the committee for being thoughtful in terms of this kind of a donation, and he said that if it would work better for you all, he recommended that you do a waiver and release of claims indemnity and hold harmless agreement with Whitman Youth Baseball.
I think I was the one who brought this up, and was the bearer of bad news on this, but constantly, I'm thinking about different things, how it happens out in the world when we get away from this building, and that's why I brought it up. I wasn't trying to hold anyone hostage on that used turf, but I was worried that somebody could say, you removed it because it was used, why? I'm all for this.
So, I think probably need some kind of a vote.
I'd entertain a motion to accept this waiver and release of claims indemnity and hold harmless agreement so we can give away the existing turf that we have.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I believe that.
Would you need a motion to?
I think we have to give it.
To give it to.
Yeah, let's accept the claim first.
Well, to give the turf to Whitman Youth Baseball, providing they're willing to sign the waiver and release of claims indemnity and hold harmless agreement.
Okay, I'll take that.
Second.
Somebody second that?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? That was, I was just giving my explanation, like you said, I wasn't trying to throw rain on anyone's parade. I was looking more for.
We have to cover ourselves nowadays, because.
Andy did not think that was unusual.
Might not be Dan Dreschko himself, but some person walks on that and trips.
Right.
Who had it originally?
Our attorney did not think that that was an unusual question.
I mean, if somebody spills coffee on themselves, they go and sue the person that served it to them, so.
Any further discussion, or we move to the vote? All those in favor? You need a motion, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll let them know as well. And Christine, you're gonna report on the current budget this year?
Correct, you have a report in front of you, the first page of your packet is the revenue that we've received so far to date. So, we're about halfway, well, six months into the year. So, you look at, the first column shows you the original appropriation, and the second column is any transfer adjustments, which we have not had, the revised, what we anticipate for revenue. Where it says year-to-date expended, that's what we've actually taken in, and then the available budget is what we expect to take in before the end of June, or by the end of June. So, if you look at the operating assessments, we've received half. We've received two payments out of four, we're expecting two more payments. The busing, we've received, will receive one more payment. The, the capital they paid in full, the technology's paid in full, the Medicaid reimbursement is, is lagging a little bit, even though we've only brought in thirty-five percent, we tend to get two or three larger payments than the first payment that we already received. Chapter seventy, we received six payments, so we expect six more payments before the end of June. Charter of school reimbursement, now they're doing on a monthly basis as well. It's chapter seventy-one, transportation, we received two payments, one in January and one in June. Homeless reimbursement, typically, we receive this July first based on last year's, so we won't be receiving any more of that. It would be unusual if we received the homeless transportation reimbursement by the end of June. We usually get that sometime in July. And then the interest income, as I spoke to last time, is we've exceeded our anticipated, what David Leary anticipated, getting an interest income by over seven thousand dollars, and that's six months' worth. So, we can be sure that we're gonna receive more than we anticipated, because we already have. I haven't made the transfer from Circuit Breaker and have not made the transfer from the, from the excess and deficiency. It's sitting there, but I have, I typically make that towards the end of the year.
Questions, anyone?
The homeless transportation, that's from, as you're on to this year, so next year, we might see a different percentage going down.
Right, we, we might see a different percentage, so that, that, what we received July first of this year was based on two thousand sixteen. Fred?
School committee, other expenses?
Oh, I haven't got that to that page yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, it's, again, these are broken down by school. The first column shows you the original appropriation, any transfers or adjustments, which I have not brought forward to you yet, then your revised budget, year-to-date expenditures is actually the money that's actually gone out the door, checks. Incumbrances is goods or services that we've encumbered or ordered, and we just have not paid for them yet either. We haven't got them, or we haven't got an invoice. There's one thing I want to bring to your attention, the last school committee meeting, I mentioned how the Department of DESI is changing how we do the end-of-the-year reporting. So, we, there's one account that looks like it's way into the hole, but I have not asked for a transfer yet. There was a new account created, it's on page. Page seven. The third line down, they've actually had us break out, the principal account, we have the assistant principals, principals, and we have the curriculum directors. Now, going forward for two thousand eighteen, we're gonna report the curriculum directors on separately. They, they've asked us to break that out, so I created a new account. So, if you look at the district-wide principal salary, it's showing that we've paid out seven hundred ninety-five thousand four ninety-eight forty-nine, and their available budget is just over one point two million. And then if you look at the curriculum directors, it looks like the available budget is negative two sixty-one. But when I bring the transfers, it's gonna offset, those two accounts are gonna offset each other. Let's see. The other, I think I brought this to your attention, last time, about three-quarters of the way down the page, it says district-wide tuition to other schools. That is for Recovery High School, which we have not budgeted for in the past, but we have received a couple of invoices for that. Fred, which one would you, did you want to bring to, do I go by that already?
Uh, yeah.
It's probably the Mars.
Yes, that's the school committee other expense.
Yeah.
That's for the regional agreement.
Okay.
Which will be offset by another account when I bring transfers forward. What was the other thing? On page nine, I think I spoke to this last month, is the special education, the, the transportation as well as the tuition to other schools. We got some good news that the deficit isn't as quite as much as it was last month that I reported this out. We had a student move, so it, that just shows you how volatile special education is. And the transportation, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but it's a little, it's thirty-one thousand dollars over. I'm not sure that.
Yeah, just movements that are in district, some are further away than as expected, so those numbers tend to go up. We can have a move out and one potentially coming back.
I would say our district coordinator, Lisa Whedon, has worked really hard this year, working closely with myself and the staff to make sure that kids that have potential to come back, can come back into the community, and we see a financial savings for that, but more importantly, they're back in the community, learning with their friends and neighborhood, you know, peers, so we're trying to make that happen, and we see a couple more in the future that potentially may be coming back. But it could be coming to you a week from now and saying someone just moved in too, so. It is a little volatile, but we're keeping a pretty tight rein on it.
Kyle, I think it's important for people to know that maybe watching us or talking about this, special education in our budgets are moving target monthly. It can change just like this with students coming and going. So, the funding goes up and down, and that's part of the reason we have E and D, is to take care of some of this change that you have uncontrolled expense.
We also have Circuit Breaker, what Dan Sullivan alluded to earlier, is that we use the, we use the Circuit Breaker from the prior year, so we're not, currently, the Circuit Breaker that we're receiving this year, we're not using in this year's budget.
No.
But if we had to, we could.
Right.
So.
It's another, another safety net.
It's another safety net, correct. I don't know if anyone else has any more questions. Yeah, just wanted to bring those to your attention.
And then we also have, Christine has been working with all of us very hard on trying to get a sense of the FY eighteen, nineteen budget. We're looking at things that we know are gonna go up, just because they're contracts that we have. Looking at estimates, one of the most challenges, of course, being health insurance, what's it really going to be? Looking at revenues, we are at a point where we know that in terms of chapter seventy, to try to think we're going to get a lot more money is not going to happen. Recently, we met with, we had a, just Christine and I met with the three fellows from Massachusetts Regional Schools to help us for our next meeting that we're having for the regional agreement, and they talked about Target Share, and they talked about chapter seventy, and truth be told, if you looked at the Target Share, if our towns were paying what the, what DESI believes they should, our chapter seventy- our Chapter 70 would be $4 million lower than it is. So the contribution from the state should be 20 million. We get 24. So to think that we're going to get a ton more revenue in Chapter 70, probably not going to happen. Revenues with the state right now are good. So we could be fortunate and see the $50 per pupil, which could be an increase. That would be good. Our ELL numbers are rough. That helps a little bit with Chapter 70, but it's not going to solve all of our revenue problems. So we're, you know, going to be looking to the towns. That's really what we're going to be looking at.
The only place that we might see a little bit of an increase is with the transportation, because you're going to see a little bit of an increase this year. And the contract goes up, is going up 4%, and it did that last year. And the children that are less than 1.5 miles away does not really change year-to-year. So, you know, you're going to see a little bit of an increase there. Right now, it's about 70-71%. So, I mean, we could conceivably, that percentage could go up since, you know, the state revenue is up, so.
But, yeah, and clearly priorities, we looked at what we'll provide you on February 7th with what a level service budget would look like in terms of increase. And then also in working with the administrative team, we'll be looking at things such as the one-to-one devices, social-emotional learning, and really what, in addition to that, would be requests from the school system. So you'll get a real sense, I think, of what the budget will look like. Christine, anything else you want to add?
Well, I know that I spoke to those retirement assessments that we get. Last month, I spoke about the Plymouth County Retirement Assessment, which is the actuarial that we are paying to catch up for the people that are retired now. That's going to be up about $70,000. And then when I talked to the Group Insurance Commission, which is the retirees' insurance for anyone that's DESI licensed, and not necessarily just a teacher, but anyone in the district, would go to the Group Insurance Commission. That is actually going down, so they're going to offset each other. So those two assessments are going to stay level for FY '18.
It's better than this current year.
Right, better than this current year, right.
So that's sort of good news. So there is some good news in terms...
And I do have a couple of Mayflower Moleculable Health Group meetings coming up. I have the FinCon meeting, which is next week, and the week after is the Steering Committee meeting. I don't believe they're going to set the rates until sometime in February, and then the group has to vote on them, which probably won't happen until March. That's, wishful thinking, it might be April. But we'll have a good sense. It's probably going to be after the budget presentation, but...
Do you have a better sense of it?
I'll have a better sense of it, right.
Fred?
What I would hope that we could see when it comes time for the budget presentation, and as you alluded to Ruth, a level service budget, and then a list of priorities.
That's what we're working on. It's absolutely what we're working on.
How we can move ahead.
That was the goal of our meeting yesterday, and we've been identifying priorities. So in putting the budget book together, we'll provide you with what a level service budget would be, probably up 3-4%. And also in addition to that, the priorities of the district, I mean, you know what they are.
But if we could have it spelled out with a dollar amount?
That's being taken care of.
And then hopefully, within our committee, we can...
We are on it, Fred.
Try to move ahead.
Anyone else? Any questions for Christine? Thank you.
Okay, and as I conclude my report, I just want to recognize Michelle Lindbergh. Because if you know, this packet was put together through rain, snow, sleet, hail, and negative temperature notes. So thanks to technology and her ingenuity, everything got in on time. So I appreciate that, Michelle, because it was pretty challenging. We had a few phone calls, but we got everything out in time, and I appreciate that, so. It's not easy to do. This, she gets, this looks great every time you see it, but it takes a lot of thought and consideration, and we appreciate that. Especially when there's no school. So we were working fast to get everything done, so thank you.
Okay, any questions for Ruth? Okay, old business, McQuan school closing. As of last night, we were at vote of selectmen's meeting, and we have been updating Hanson on what McQuan school closing is going to look like. And the Hanson Selectmen are going to have a special town meeting on February 5th to ask the town to approve the amount so Ernie can continue on with the repairs over February vacation and over April vacation. Because it's that close, it's that tight of a timeline. Also, as of last night, the town of Whitman is going to be holding their special town meeting in March, which will conform with our timeline. We're making it work because their part of the town meeting assessment is only going to be contingent here at the high school, where Hanson's is larger because we're talking about McQuan, Indian Head, and Hanson Middle. So their portion is larger. The regionalization part of the two towns only is building. The repairs here will be shared by Whitman and Hanson in the percentage that they are. I believe it's 60-40. It's very close. So they're going to be having a town meeting also. Also, on January 31st, we're going to be holding a meeting for parents, teachers, anyone that would like to come to explain the transitioning and exactly what's going to be happening from McQuan to Indian Head, from Indian Head to the middle, and from the middle to this building. So anyone that's listening, or anyone that's out, we will be advertising this in the paper so people can have a better idea and get here. Come, you'll find out exactly what's going on. We're going to try to give you more updates so you'll be better informed for the February 5th town meeting in Hanson, and also for the March town meeting in Whitman. So we are working on that. We had discussed that last night. The team, Ruth's team is going to put that together. And anyone that wants to be involved with it, I'm sure that input is a good thing, and definitely any communication that we can have with parents or anyone watching, please keep that date in mind. January 31st will be an informational meeting on the move. Dan?
Correction, I think, on our little amendment here. Says the town meeting is on the 8th. Is it on the 5th on Monday?
It is the 5th. It's a Monday.
It's the 5th, Monday, the 5th.
Want to correct how that gets it off.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
It is February 5th in Hanson, which is the first Monday of the month.
Correct.
Thought it was a little weird.
Any questions on the closing, that I might be able to help with? Like I said, this was all last night. It was, it's been kind of rushed. We got the...
We need the money to do the closing.
Would you be seeking a motion for the article?
Yeah, we're going to get to that, right next. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, $555,095.13 for costs related to the closing of the McQuan Elementary School as follows. $189,901.88, which is 40.18% to fund the capital costs associated with moving the pre-kindergarten district-wide program from McQuan School to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School, and $365,193.25 to move the K-2 grades to the Indian Head Elementary School, moving grade 5 to Hanson Middle School, and moving special education programs to the Ball Elementary School. I entertain a motion to...
So moved? Second.
This is the Hanson warrant article for the special town meeting for the closing of McQuan. Made in second. A discussion? Chris?
So, two things. So one, and this is a little nitpicky, but do we need to spell out a little bit more that the $365,193 is not just to move, but that's going to involve some other things beyond just movement? Or am I overthinking this? So, I mean, we're talking about, we're not just talking about moving costs, for clarity, right? We're talking about all the...
Well, it's associated with the move. Any of the changes that we're doing are associated with the move of the students.
No, so I just want to make sure. I don't want some wise guy saying, "Oh, my God, you know, your guys are spending $365,000 to just move, you know, people across the street."
Oh, no, there's associated, there's a lot of... Christine, do you have that paper we have...
I do, but actually, Chris, this was written by the town of Hanson.
Okay. So it is what it is.
You know, I wrote one and sent it to them, and then they sent it to legal counsel, and they, you know...
Suplex.
What we'll do, Chris, on this...
I just want to make sure we're overly clear, or you're overly clear.
Right.
On the 31st...
I didn't see where you're coming from, but they wrote it.
Okay.
And had legal counsel look at it.
On the 31st of January, for all those that come to the meeting, we'll break it right down because we have that paper, and that way they'll be able to know exactly what it is.
The second, the second piece is, I think, so we all know that this is our best option, and there really isn't an alternative to this, but I think maybe we should be prepared, or you should be prepared if you're going to do this at town meeting, just to be very clear of, if this wasn't voted, what the expense to do the necessary repairs to McQuan for another year, because that's a, that's a pretty big number, right?
We discussed that at last night's selectmen's meeting, somewhat at length of what the cost would be and what the matrix was for the next three years, and we'll be prepared to give all of that.
Thank you.
Great, I'm glad you brought it up, because we will be prepared. Robbie?
Just real quick, because I asked this at the last meeting. In the event that they run into any construction problems or anything like that, did we build a buffer in here, because that was something that we talked about before? If the workers had to work weekends, start working double shifts, anything like that, because the price does change at that point.
I believe Ernie priced it on the schedule that he has to move forward, not counting on that.
Not counting for any hiccups, is the best way to put it.
I don't think that he budgeted, he budgeted as close as he possibly could to keep the costs down to the towns. And some of the related work that's going to be done, a lot of it's going to be done by some of the help that is currently in the district.
Oh, no, I understand that, but I'm just, my fear is they go to excavate, and all of a sudden...
Well, one of the things would be finding asbestos at Indian Head.
Yes, exactly.
That's a given. That is separate, and Christine, maybe you can address that, because we talked about that today.
Yes, because we had, Ernie and I had called Mike McQ when he discovered in those classrooms, 10101, over at Indian Head, there is some asbestos. So we called Mike, and Mike said, "Do what you have to do." Ernie said, "It's going to be about $32,000, and they'll reimburse us on the Maytown meeting."
So they'll just show us separate?
Do that separately.
That's going to be separate.
That's fine.
So that's how we're handling that.
I mean, my big concern is, is all of a sudden, we don't move in on time because we didn't have the budget to keep the project moving forward. But as long as you've had that discussion with the town, it's fine.
And I think when you work with an older building, such as the Indian Head, we know from when the renovation in the 90s that there were surprises.
Yep.
So, you know, the less you can disrupt the asbestos, the better it is. So we're working at, how little can we do without costing more? The high school, that was one of the value-added pieces of the high school for the preschool. This is a known building.
You knew it, right.
It's not that old. We know there's not asbestos. There's all sorts of things that make that a much more reliable cost. Once you get into old buildings, yeah.
Yeah, no, exactly.
But that's how we're handling that one.
Perfect. That's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll move to the vote. So I have a motion in a second on the Hanson warrant article, special town meeting for closing of McQuan. All those in favor? Thank you.
Bring the warrant article for Whitman to one of the February meetings.
Okay. Any other, any other questions on the McQuan closing? Superintendent's search update. Well, I think everyone was there the other night. We impaneled a committee. We will be meeting on the 17th of January. Will be the first meeting. Everything seems to be in place. We have 19 applications currently. We will be going through and selecting, and paring it down, so to speak, and coming back with the report to the committee. But they're going to meet on the 17th. And it's a fairly aggressive schedule. I suggested meeting weekly to try and, you know, stay, if you spread it out too far, you're kind of regrouping every time you have the meeting. If you stay right at it and get it done, it seems to be a much easier transition from doing this in previous times. So we're scheduling it kind of weekly, but our first meeting is going to set more of how we're doing it, what the thought process is, what the grading schedule is going to be for the applicants, and how it's going to come out. So the first meeting, I think I told them four to five hours.
It won't take that. They're going to all quit.
But I was brunting them for some time, so.
Right, and we're putting together packets for the people who are on the subcommittee. I did work with Andy Wa in terms of what happens in executive session and what doesn't, because that has been of concern. And I think we have that clarified, that this group that's meeting is a screening subcommittee of the school committee. It's not anything that will be able to take a binding vote on who the final candidate is. And there are some districts that got into some issues with that. Andy's aware of that, and he's there to advise us if there are any questions. You did receive a late application. So I don't, the closing date was Friday. Whether you want to consider that as your 20th application, I don't know. I just learned that this evening.
Does anyone have a problem with that? No. We did have a closing date.
Friday. It was last Friday, the 5th.
Which was the 5th?
Were they sent electronically, or...
It was sent in paper, but it was dated January 8th. So it was not dated January 5th, which was what he should have done. But anyway, he didn't. But we do have a 20th applicant that came in today.
I think I entertain a motion too, and let me get into a discussion about it. Motion to accept the last applicant?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Does anyone have a problem with it? I mean, I think the other night, I tried to explain and thought that it was, this is the biggest position in the district, so maybe we should take a look at the 20th applicant. The other side says if the applicant didn't come on time, it's kind of like going to school on time. So I mean, that's something to be taken into consideration. Fred?
I hate to be a hard person on this, but there was a specific timeline. And you've got to follow the timeline and the rules and the regulations. It wouldn't be fair if there was someone else sitting at home that wanted to apply and said, "Jeez, I missed the timeline," and didn't apply. Wouldn't be fair to that person. There's a deadline for a reason.
Yep.
Same with bids.
I didn't hear you.
Same with bids. You put bids in, you got a deadline. You come in afterwards, it's not acceptable.
Any other comments?
Can you just, so can you clarify the dates? The close date was when?
Was Friday.
Okay, and it was received today?
It was received today, but it was dated, the letter, the cover letter was dated January 8th.
And it was sent via mail?
Yes.
And was it posted, was it, how did, how did the rest of them come in? Did they come in via mail or electronically?
They came electronically, and we got, we got one that was paper and electronically from the same applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So the motion on the floor, so we could move into discussion, was to accept the application. So a yes vote would accept it, and a no vote would deny it. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay, thank you. So we will be reporting back to you. One of the reasons we had five members from the school committee on this committee is it keeps it under a quorum. You can't have a quorum of school committee members on any subcommittee, because if there is, and they vote anything, it becomes a vote. And it doesn't give the whole, the whole school committee the opportunity to vote. So, believe me, we've done some research on this to try and keep everything 100% straight up.
And the whole committee can't go into executive session for reason number eight for executive session, and that's what we've got to stay away from.
Right. When we finally do, we take the last three, four, five, six applicants, and we go into the interview process, it has to be done in open session. The committee can do nothing in a quorum to hire or interview any of the superintendent applicants unless it's an open session.
Was it, were we meeting that day?
Upstairs.
In the...
In the conference room.
12th?
It's cozy.
It is.
It's cozy.
I figure if it's cozy, Bob, it'll move it along.
It won't be four or five hours then, right?
I don't think so.
So, any, any questions about superintendent search? Chris?
Did we identify the last two folks?
I have...
Did we identify the last two?
Yes, I have one parent from Whitman, Dan Farrell, has said that he would do this. And we are still working on the Hanson parent, because they came up with a name, and we found out she'd just been hired as a parent professional. And you all asked that it be someone who did not work for the district. So there is another name out there, but they're pending the availability of that person. So I would say by this time tomorrow, we'll know that. So we've moved, moved ahead with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. This has all the previous minutes, which most of them, or all of them have been voted, Michelle?
Yeah.
All of them have been voted. I would entertain a motion to accept the policy subcommittee recommendations.
So moved, second.
Dated January 10th, 2018.
So moved.
Discussion. Policy committee has worked very hard on these policies. It's a long and tedious job behind the scenes, and I want to thank them for doing this. It's kind of like the regional agreement. There's no glory.
It's been a lot of fun.
Any further discussion before we move to the vote? All those in favor?
Great.
Unanimous, thank you.
That was a major endeavor, and we worked out a terrific system that Lori Wright and Michelle Lindberg put together, so we could look at two things at once, and I think it worked for us. We still are going to be meeting to look at the social media policy. And we talked to Beth and Kevin about that today through our meeting, and also how we're going to work on our issues of substitute teachers. So we will reconvene policy subcommittee one more time to take a good look at that, and also work with the association as well.
Everybody good?
Moving along, it's good.
Okay, I don't believe there's anything surplus to declare. There are no gifts.
Nope.
Unfortunately, Christmas is over. I do have one field trip. Student Council on Wednesday, March 7th to Friday, March 9th. We'll be going to the MASC Conference and Hyannis Conference Center. It's the State Student Council Conference, there's eight students going and two adults. They were asking for a nurse waiver, because there is current coverage at the Hyannis Conference Center. I'd entertain a motion to accept.
So moved, second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Subcommittee reports, warrant, subcommittee, I'd entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 4th, 2018.
So moved, second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. That's something new, it keeps coming up, they've changed the rules, and we want to be compliant.
We're doing it.
Negotiation, subcommittee. I think you...
We'll meet tomorrow at 5:00.
Negotiation, subcommittee. I think you...
We'll meet tomorrow at 5:00.
Okay. Regional Agreement Amendment Committee.
Next week.
We'll meet Monday, the 29th of January at 6:00.
Right here in the library, again?
Yes, correct.
Anyone that wants to come, we're getting right along, we'll be moving along on that. That's another tedious job, but it's something that needs to be done. And the two gentlemen that we have hired to help us with it have been doing a fabulous job, so. Good for that policy subcommittee, as you just heard the report, they will be meeting one more time.
I'll send out a meeting invitation.
Facilities and capital improvement, subcommittee.
We didn't meet this evening, but we came through the snowstorm okay. We will have some air and water quality reports at our next meeting next month. And rooftop units were installed at the middle school. Pretty, pretty much the basics, I believe everyone has the report that Ernie prepared.
That's it? Any other questions? Thank you, Fred. Legislative update?
Nothing at this point.
Pilgrim Area Collaborative Representative Report.
So we did not meet this month, because our meeting is the first Thursday of the month. As you know, we have a big, almost blizzard, snow bomb. I do want to just inform you that we have an amended version of our annual report for Pilgrim Area, and that will be forthcoming.
Okay.
They did some amendments.
Yeah.
And also, our chairperson has changed. Kendra Campbell, previously our vice chair, has stepped in, as our chairman has stepped out, because he's interested in pursuing the executive directorship, and is applying for that, so he has stepped aside. He was from Plumpton. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
8:47, win.
Look at that. Hit it for 49.
Who had it at 54?